I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a forum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, we need a motion to certify the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Brooke, taken by Robert, all for that. That's seven oh, we're all present today. Let's pray. God, thank you for bringing us here and thank you for the weather that we've had. Thank you for the rain and the decent weather that we've had coming up into these few hot days that we've had here. We pray for our folks that's working out in this and our kids. Pray, Lord, for a good start-up tomorrow with our teachers and all of our staff. Pray that you bring them back safely, help us to have a really good year, God. Just help us to just be wherever we need to be, to be there for them and for them to be there for each other. And we pray for our kids as they come back, these first-year kids, kindergarteners, first-year teachers, all these folks, God, just be with them. Be with us today, give us wisdom and guidance. Amen. Do you hear pledges?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Praise allegiance to the Texas state under God, one indivisible.
Looks like we have no one here for open forum, so let's look at our action items. Item A, consider approval of proposed 2021-2022 tax rate.
All right, I'll go over the budget and tax rates.
Okay.
This is a updated copy of what you saw for last meeting with the final figures after we got our certified values. We're projecting local tax revenue to be 11 million 304. State revenue to be 2.6 million, much on the front page. I updated the bullets to show you that our tax rate calculates out to be .8968 for MNO and .2080 for INS with a total dollar .1048. That is down from 1.142, I think last year, to 1.142. So it's about three and a half cents. We're basing our budget on a daily, average daily tenant's 1380 and our certified net taxable value is 1.2 billion. It was not a lot of movement between our preliminary values and our certified values this year, which is a little odd. So we were pretty close on our estimates. None of the information at the bottom has changed, that is all still relevant. That's what's included in the budget. Updated the following charts to show you with the new certified values history, including the ones we just received, so you can kind of see where the values are going. Also updated the tax rate history. Electoral grant allotments in there because this year, even more than ever, our grants are playing a huge role in our budgeting process, so that is still included. Then the three sheets that are landscaped there are the three budgets that you officially adopt. The first one is the operating fund. It compares our current budget, and that is our current amended budget. It is not actual, so it is not expensive, it's just what we have budgeted. And that's the first column. And then the second column is this proposed budget. And then out to the right, you can see the differences from the two. You can see a lot of movement in our revenues. That is due to the top, the first one is local funds, that's due to tax values and what we're going to collect on our taxes. The second one is our state funds, that's due mostly from loss of students and then the difference there. No movement on our federal funds. For this fund, our federal funds are mostly Shar's cost report and those are pretty stable, they don't change a lot. So then you have the expenses by function and out to the side, you can see a little bit of an explanation of why there's a difference. The first one, the largest one for us, as it should be, is our instruction piece and we absorb some positions there. And even though it's an increase, it would have been a huge increase if we hadn't absorbed some positions. And that is the line item where we've also shifted salaries over to federal. We've shifted about 615,000 salaries over to federal. That should be, you know, that will eventually come back to this budget. Not a whole lot of movement on those. We have the Function 31. We've added an LSSP in our Fed Department. Even though that's an addition, we have some savings in some other areas in the Fed Department that that was a planned position. We were contracting this position at one point and we also had a couple of aid positions that we're able to absorb and that made room for this person. Then on the, the other big movement is Function 34, transportation. We had two buses that we lost this year and we're not doing that next year, so that's why that went down. And then all the way down to Function 53, that we had E-rate last year. We did an E-rate project and we're not doing that this next year. There's not another cycle coming up yet and so that's why that's lower. We won't have those. As you can see, it's basically a balanced budget, only a difference of $8,467, understanding that we moved the 600,000 out, so it would have been a deficit budget. Shows there our projected fund balance and over in the far right column towards the bottom, it shows what we estimate to need for our three months' fund balance, which is what's, you know, required. And we obviously are going to do well above that. We've kind of gotten our fund balance moving in the right direction. So we're in a comfortable position there. Any questions on the debt one? Then we have debt service, the next one. That's the one where we pay our bonds. Pretty cut and dry, our bonds are set, our payments are set, so we just make sure that we have enough revenue coming in from taxes and a little bit from the state to cover our bonds. That one, as long as we continue to have good tax percentage, as far as the payment percentage, where people are continuing to pay their taxes on time and so forth, then we don't have any trouble with our debt fund. And then food service fund. This one is, Ms. Kaywood and I developed this together. You'll see, you'll see a shift here from local, not much local revenue and more federal revenue. And that is because we're, with all this COVID, she's been able to run a program that the name of it has completely led me, there's a bunch of initials to it, but basically every kid can eat free. So that means, you know, we don't have a lot of paying students, so our, our local revenue will involve, if they want a second tray, they have to pay for that, or the adults that eat pay, and also if she sells all of her items. So that's why the difference in that. And expenditures are actually down from this current year. This current year has a, has a grant in it for a piece of equipment and that's, that's a little bit of the difference. We don't have a grant for next year. Our fund balance is good and healthy and we expect to add to it this year and next Any questions? Last page is the notice. This is what will be in the paper, so you have the first, as long as you approve the gross tax rate. You've got the first shot of seeing, seeing what will be in the paper. It shows the MNO and INS tax rates that we're proposing. It shows appraised values from previous year to current year. It's our outstanding debt, principal only, comparison of last year's rates to this year's rates, and the levy on an average resident. So it's showing the average resident will see an increase of $67.11. And obviously, we are lowering both the MNO and INS rates, so that's strictly due to appraised values going up. And then the fund balance is at the bottom. And just keep in mind that those fund balances are not necessarily going to correspond with what you're seeing on other pages because this is a not encumbered fund balance. They want you to take out the amount of expenses required to meet obligations before we get any state money. And for us, we don't, we don't get state money very quick because we're so heavily dependent on taxes, so that's an adjusted number there. It's not, it's not a true fund balance. Any questions on that?
Pam, do you know off the top of your head what payroll is per month?
It's, this past year, just under a million, like 935, 950, depending on absences or what happened, just under, it'll be a little bit over a million next year. I don't think we, think we had, we might have had one month over a million, the month we did the, whatever that was called. I'm sure that, there was a technical name, we might have gone over a million that month, but it's generally in alumnis.
Just kind of thinking, you know, sometimes you say you're the biggest business in town. I'm sure Black Lottos, I guess, would be, they both would have been nice, they got their payroll.
Yeah, they have over, they have over 1,000 employees now.
Probably so.
I think that's about, about 1,300 or something.
We'll have, we're showing to have 231 for next year. We still have two postings, so.
231 employees.
Any more questions?
Do you remember what the projected impact on the fund balance for last year's budget was when it came in on 281?
That, that was the projected, that has not changed. And currently, you know, we're, we're not going to hit that because of our enrollment. And they're holding us harmless, but it's, it's not going to be the same impact that it had previous year when they held us harmless. So we're, we're, our plan is to use SER and make sure that we break even, that we will either, you know, be in the black or break even.
So from what I understand, and you probably know more, but I've talked to a few people, we're not the only school district. I mean, every school district, I think, is they're down and they're enrollment, right? You aren't any that are holding their own?
Well, I think it's geographical. I think there are pockets of the state that are growing regard, you know, regardless of all this, this issue we have. I think our, our region of the state has been declining for a while. Most schools are holding, holding steady. I think that's the best they can hold for is to just hold steady. But a lot of schools in the northeast portion of the state are declining enrollment. And I think the closer we are to a metropolitan area, the more likely we are to see a decline. The school I came from most recently was pretty steady. I mean, they didn't change twenty kids in any given year, you know? And those kids you kind of knew were going to another grade school and you'd have them come back or whatever, a little bouncing around, but just pretty, pretty steady for several years. But then there, there was a group chat between some of the business ventures about two months ago asking about enrollment and we had like 12 people in this region respond and only two of them were either holding steady or seeking progress, the rest of us were all showing decline. And some of those, it was not in their enrollment, so they were thinking it had to do with, you know, people homeschooling or keeping their kids out or something like that. But, but a good handful of them had kind of been in that cycle for a few years. But as a state, our enrollment work is growing by, I can't remember the number, millions something kids a year. It's just, it's, you know, it's in pockets. And as those areas seep out, that's, that's where you're seeing, you know, you've got, you've got schools that have been adding canvases every year for 10 years.
Yeah.
And we just, we're just not in an area to see that kind of growth. Ours is a more slowly steady.
Well, your metropolitan space is the north metroplex area, I mean, they've got huge, huge businesses coming in and, you know, bringing in workers and families that are a part of that, so their role is pretty large.
True.
I think Houston, Dallas, and Austin are the, North Austin, Southwest Austin is growing and then, of course, you know, we can see Dallas.
I think the end of Houston's.
Maybe the fastest growing city. What's that, like in the nation right now, Ben?
Probably, yeah. It'll be surprising. But we're excited, we're going to grow. We're going to get them back.
I like it.
I'm trying really hard.
I like it.
I don't, I don't know about growing from where we were, I just want to get the ones back.
Get them back, right. Get that 60 back that we have when we put out in March. It'll be good, too.
Yep, thanks for being on top of things. You know, we don't want to, we're not letting anybody go, but we're, y'all know, we're just kind of, when students go down, if somebody, a teacher moves on, then we may not be able to fill that spot, so we'll stay out of the bind in two years whenever we want to keep our class numbers down, but we also want to keep our teachers willing to pay. So thank you for being on top of that. Got anything else? At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed total tax rate of 1.1048, which is .8968 for the maintenance and operation and .2080 for the purpose of principal and interest on debts. Do I have a second for that? Second by Josh, all four. Seven oh, okay.
Thank you.
On to item B, consider approval of public hearing. Meeting date, 2021-2022 budget and proposed tax rate.
Looking at Monday, August 30th at 5:15 here in the lecture hall. Don't care if any other regular business in the month of August did that meeting as well.
So that'll be our regular, say, against the 16? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
No, August 30th, sorry.
30th?
August 30th. Monday, August 30th, 5:15.
I'm not looking, I'm supposed to be looking at. Yeah, a motion that we approve Monday, August 30th, 2021 at 5:15 in the PM for the public hearing meeting date to receive input and discuss and adopt the 2021-2022 budget and tax rate. That motion is made by Lendan. As presented.
Sorry, I thought you were making.
Seconded by Robert, all four. Seven oh.
Thank you.
C, consider approval of property and casualty insurance renewal quote from Texas Rural Education Association Risk Management.
You have that in your, in your packet. It is a renewal quote. We are already with TRE RMC. There is an increase, which seems to be normal. We will actually go out to bid this next year and later on with TASB. They will not quote you property without also quoting you at the same time, workers comp. And we're in a three-year agreement with a workers comp provider. So that'll finish up this year, we'll go out and get a new quote, we'll see where we, where we land from there. But it is an increase without $60,000. That's, but this is what we have, so it's a recommendation for property casualty, TRE A RMC.
And that's who we've been with before, right?
For the last, wow, six years, seven, eight years probably, yeah.
Yeah. So next year, we'll get up there.
We'll get some bids.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion that we approve TRE A RMC renewal quote for $258,500 for property casualty insurance as presented. Motion made by Leanne. Seconded by Scott, all four. Seven oh on that one. Thank you. C here, consider approval, this is D, consider approval of increasing cafeteria breakfast and lunch prices for 2021-2022.
As you, as Ms. Pam talked about briefly just a while ago, the CEP program that Ms. Regal has us in provides free breakfast and lunch for every student on the first time, on the first breakfast or lunch at that time. We are increasing based upon the cost of the meal itself and what we have to do for, to cover our costs. And so we are, we are asking to move student lunch, well, move student breakfast from $1.80 to $2 for K through 12 students or pre-K through 12 students. Student lunch from 305 to 3 and 1/4. Employee lunch and adult visitors will go from $4 to $4 and 1/4. R475 for the adult visitor for meals. Breakfast will go from 250 to, well, 250 stayed the same for employee. Adult visitor will go from breakfast from 250 to $3. Again, that's just to cover costs. She, she and I talked about it, she actually was wanting to go, I mean, she was just going to try to go about halfway. I told her there wasn't any need for us to just go halfway, it still cost us money on the second meal, let's cover the cost and, and try to stay where we need to be within her budget for the meal. So that's a recommendation. Second meal breakfast for students to be $2, second meal lunch will be 3 and 1/4.
First was free, right?
Correct. So if they want it, again, so it's the extra meal, if one's not enough, they will come back, they have to pay for it. And they will have to pay for it. Charges are, she has taken out charges because this past year, well, not just past year, each year, we're having to, we have to chase down charges and absorb some charges in some areas. And so that would be, we're staffing students a lot.
How much does that come out to you? I'm just curious.
This past year, student-wise, was about $5,000, $6,000?
Yeah.
For students.
And that's just on the extra.
That's just on the extra, yeah, because they have these parts for this time.
It'd be higher if you, if that one you're free to begin with.
I'd say a couple of years before that was even more than that.
My first year, it was quite a bit more than that.
Yeah. So, any variance. So we kind of put it in place this past year, which helps some in regard to the, to the staff part, was where they, they signed an agreement, make sure I'm right, they did sign the agreement this past year, I thought we did, to where it would come out once they off their paycheck, payroll, and nothing to do with that, I think. So, but even to keep our payroll, we have to deal with that in cafeteria, just pay for what we need.
And on that note, just a question, is there something, I mean, people can make donations, the community can make donations designated for.
Sure.
Those meals, say if they want to say student meals, you know, I'm going to give $500 and use it up until then, so.
Sure.
I mean, they're getting the one meal free, but some kids need more than one because that's, they're not going to get anything after they leave school, so.
Yep. Okay. We will, we will take that donation.
I figured you would.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2021-2022 cafeteria breakfast and lunch pricing as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brooks, all four. Seven oh.
Thank you.
On to DE, consider approval of vendor for the 2021-2022 fuel proposal.
As I know that you all know in regard to fueling up your own vehicles, fuel prices have increased a good bit since last year. Went out, got bids, Bobby got, received three bids, one from Jackson Oil, one from Winkle Oil, and one from Arpletex Oil. As you can see from the, what was in your board book, Jackson Oil was, was best costed, so that's going to be a recommendation for Jackson Oil to be our fuel provider for this coming school year.
Okay. And y'all can see that on there, so that's going to be 2.3692 for ethanol completed and .10 above cost for non-ethanol and 2.1692 for diesel. Plus 10 for the ultra-low sulfur, I guess when we get on the school stuff here. Seven.
Yep.
Back to this here, the motion that we approve. Fuel proposal for gasoline and diesel submitted by Jackson Oil Company of Mount Pleasant as the best overall price for the district, so I have a motion for that. Motion made by Robert, seconded by Scott, all four. Seven oh.
Okay, thank you.
Consider approval of August 3rd budget amendment. Excuse me, back to F, consider approval of payoff existing Apple lease agreement payoff.
What we have is we have a, we had a lease agreement with Apple that was kind of a continuation, I'm sure I mentioned the same as right, Anthony, that we had started with, the ex-predor started with us as well. Within some new accounting guidelines, the Gatsby, they're going into effect this year, what we'd like to do is go ahead and, go ahead and pay off that lease, since we have semester funds there that we've budgeted for technology purchase anyway, pay that off, so therefore take off the, the lease off the books and not pay the interest off of it, just go and get that off the books.
We have, we have the trade credit to reduce that value, too. We have about over $15,000 trade credit, one or two minutes, so it's less, less than Mount, or Mount.
But Mount here is 84,936.09.
It's going to be less than that, it's going to be 87.
Okay. Which our motion would be of not more than, so.
Okay.
We'll get about 15 knocked off of that. All right. Will I make a motion that we approve the exercise, approve the exercise and purchase option on lease agreement number MLP 0031778, if not more than $84,936.09? Do I have a second for that one? Seconded by Leanne, all four. All right, seven oh, thank you. Consider approval of our August 3rd budget amendment.
That is just to do what we just talked about? In the budget to move the money over to payoff the lease.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion that we make that budget minimum? Motion made by Brooks, seconded by Leanne, all for that, seven oh. Consider approval of proposed revision to DEC local policy compensation benefits, leaves and absences.
Chan, do you want to say anything about your address there?
They had, uh, was in the newest update that we got from Tasby. And based on all of the situations going on, police officers that are in school districts, what they've done is they're requiring us to allocate mental health funds, or not funds, mental health leave, um, available for any of our police officers that may have to deal with a lot of COVID contact tracing or a situation that may have to do with COVID. So the recommendation from Tasby was ten days for Max, who is our police officer here. So if that was to impact him in a negative way and we needed to utilize that, we, we have that in, it's a maximum ten-day allocation. So that's, that's important.
Can I get a motion that we approve the proposed revision to DEC local policy as presented? Made by Robert, I second it, all four. Seven oh on that one.
Thank you.
Last one, consider approval of salary scale additions to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two composition, compensation plan.
These are just the addition of the last two pieces of the salary composition, uh, compensation plan, composition. Compensation plan that we, that Chan has been working all summer, uh, since we have now hired a, we'll kind of speak like a pathologist that will address that position there as well as non-CDO drivers. So we're just asking for the approval to add those two pay scales to our district pay, pay scale.
Okay. Any questions on that? So we need a motion to approve the salary scale additions to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two compensation plan as presented. Motion made by Scott, seconded by Robert, all for that one. It's seven oh.
Thank you.
Information items, future newspaper firms selected to publish required MBIS, the public notices.
We're going to basically just kind of follow what the county decided to do. The Windsor News does, uh, currently serve, uh, the Franklin County, has a, had, I don't think, out of the, uh, three papers available, I think had the largest circulation in Franklin County. So for, for the purposes of having to, uh, for required public notices, that's what we need to put it in.
Okay.
Also, I know you'd already know, uh, just a reminder for board members, uh, some online training to get to hero, um, every year. Like I'll, I'll update that with you, I'll send that to you, okay, what that is and remind you about the HRO training, uh, that is required each year.
Did you knock that out, Linda?
Yeah.
Thirty minutes from now or something?
Yeah. More than an hour.
Have you seen? Have you already seen it?
No, I have not, I said I will. I'll be to you today, I'll be to you tomorrow. Also a reminder, don't forget tomorrow is our convocation. Uh, you're invited, love to see you at breakfast at the local cafeteria, it starts at eight. And, uh, we will have, uh, breakfast burritos and pastries and some juice and milk to go along with it. And more convocation will start at nine in the auditorium and, uh, that will kick off our school year. So if you're available, we'd love to have you be a part of that.
I would love to. Given the situation here.
I understand, I understand. Yeah.
I would love to.
Leanne, uh, birthday is still is August the twelfth, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Board members will be out there, so tell Landon, bring the kids, he's in charge, we'll see at seven.
I'll be getting a kindergarten drop off.
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be.
I like first day.
I'll be.
You'll be driving.
I'll be crying, no, I'll be, I'll be walking in balling.
Okay. Forty-nine.
All right, yeah, I mean, I just just set that expectation, when y'all see me red-faced, I'm fine.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Orton, if some of us come up and help with the pickup drop off?
We'd love it.
Take a cussing or two?
Not first day, no.
No, not first day.
Yeah.
Hey, we just get all parents proud.
Yes. I won't be my child for that.
Hand up tissue.
This will be the first year in a lot of years, the seventh grade haven't been at the elementary, at the school, taking pictures of birthdays at school.
I think it's my first board meeting that I've been to here in Mount Vernon, she's not been in attendance.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Wasn't it the last week? Oh, that was, sorry, you're right.
Second was two.
Second. That's right, that's right.
Then I forget.
Yeah. Good thing.
We also, uh, offer this information, I've been having on there, meet the teacher and meet the tiger will both be, uh, next Tuesday, the tenth? Yes, the tenth? Meet the teacher starts at five, meet the tiger will start, no, meet the teacher's five thirty, meet the tiger is seven thirty. So both of those will be next Tuesday.
We going, uh, close session, do we?
Sure.
Okay. Any further business? No personnel to report? Wouldn't you say we were two employees shy of being a full staff? Does that just age?
We lost, no, we lost an eight yesterday, so.
Without a three.
I think, I think that's included.
Was that in your two?
No, no.
Your two, is that else in here, Ms. Turner? Okay.
It's at the middle school.
One, one pending hiring.
Yep. Well, at least we got pictures and.
Yes, we're full of teachers.
Okay, let's thank y'all for, you principals and administrator, y'all mixing it, rock and roll. It's been good years. If there's no further business at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting here at twelve forty-six Brook Hall.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you.